Okay, welcome. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the Bridgewater Town Council meeting to order is Tuesday, September 7th, 2021. It is 7:00 PM. I'd ask that we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, for all. Just as a reminder, this meeting is being aired live and recorded. Pursuant to section 20 of Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. This meeting of the Town Council for the town of Bridgewater will be fully remote and accessible to the public through remote participation in the greatest extent possible. There will be no in-person attendance permitted. Citizens wish to tune into the meeting may do so by Zoom or Facebook Live. This evening, we do not have any condolences. However, with the 20th anniversary of 9/11 this Saturday, one of the single darkest periods in this nation's history. We owe it to those lost and to the countless heroes who ran towards danger on that day and the days that followed. Tonight's moment of silence is dedicated in their honor. Okay, thank you. Excuse me. Approval of the minutes from the previous meeting from August 3rd. Entertainer motion to approve.
Oh, move.
We have a second by Councilor Chase. Any discussion?
No.
Seeing none, a move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Dr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Colin Bodis.
Yes.
Thank you. Nine in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Moving on announcements from the President. I do have a couple of brief announcements. I'll try to keep it brief. The first is I wanted to extend an invitation from the town to the Town Council from the Fire Chief to attend the 20th anniversary observance of September 11th being held Saturday, September 11th, 2021 at 8:30 in the morning. The observance ceremony will be held at the firefighter's memorial in the Town Common. And a breakfast buffet will follow later at Old Scotland Links function room at 9:30. If you could, please, member of the council, get back to the Fire Chief by this Friday, September 3rd at 3:00. I also wanted to announce an email correspondence from the Chief of Police, Christopher Del Monte, announcing the 24th Citizens Police Academy class. Ten-week program beginning October 12th at the police station. Instructions given by the police officers on a variety of topics. And I agree with Chief Del Monte's email. Many of us sitting on the council and having responsibility of oversight of the budget of the police department. I think it'd be a really good way if you don't have intimate knowledge of how they operate, you know, if you could find the time to squeeze in and participate in the academy class, that would be great. I also wanted to make one last announcement with my intention to bring the council back to the chambers on the 21st on our next meeting. I am asking that by the 14th, members of the council reach out to Joshua or the town manager to make sure that any necessary technology that's in place for you is available and is working. This is tentative. This is based on nothing changing in the COVID world and that our technology is up, but my intention is to get the council back in a hybrid state for some time before inviting the public back into the council chambers. That's it. Moving on to proclamations. We have none. Citizens, open forum. We have any citizens wishing to speak tonight, just state your name and street. Any citizens for citizen open forum? Josh, I do not see anyone.
If you could just. See anyone with their hands up?
Okay. Okay, moving on to E. Appointments. Elder Affairs Commission Appointment, Douglas Store. I'll just defer.
Motion approved.
For a brief.
I can hit.
Okay, second. Any discussion?
No, sir.
Okay, seeing now, just mentioned Douglas Store certainly been a valuable asset as a town employee, a member of the university, and certainly a volunteer in this community. And very excited to see him participating on this commission, so I'd move for a roll call vote.
Mr. Colin Bodis.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Dr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Thank you. Nine in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Moving on to hearings. First hearing this evening. It is 7:06. Going to open the hearing for P. 2021-016711 Transfer of Wine and Malt Beverages Package Store License. You know, go ahead and open the public hearing and ask if there's any general questions from the public. Just to confirm, Josh, I do not see any.
I did not see anyone either.
Anyone from the public speaking in favor? Still do not see any.
Mr. President, I'm an attorney for the applicant 711. My name is John. I'd know if you'd like to hear from me.
Sure, John, go ahead.
Just briefly, this is a transfer. 711 of Massachusetts, Inc. is the corporate entity. It's going to be acquiring the beer and wine license, the package store license from the franchisee, which is Navid Enterprises, Inc. So this is a straightforward transfer. You're not going to see really any changes on the day-to-day operations. In attendance, in addition to myself, is Dana Pelton. He's the proposed manager of record and he's the store manager at 711. He has over 15 years' experience in the retail industry. And he was also a prior franchise owner of Tedeschi Food Shops in Bridgewater, which did hold a beer and wine license. So he does come to you with a lot of experience and specifically as it relates to the sale and service of alcohol. And finally, also in attendance is 711's area field consultant, Melissa Dahloff. So we are all here. If you have any questions or concerns or comments, I would be more than happy to answer those tonight.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public speaking in opposition? Josh, I see none.
I did not see anyone either.
Okay. Next, I would entertain questions from town councils, but if we could just hear from the town manager first, if he has any additional comments.
Mr. President, I have nothing to add to what the attorney has presented. We're all, certainly all in favor.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions from the council? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing. It is 7:08. And would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Second. Okay, I will for a roll call vote.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Dr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Colin Bodis.
Yes.
Thank you. Nine in favor, zero against.
Excellent. Thank you for coming in.
Right. Thank you, town councils. Have a nice night.
You too. Okay, moving on. Item B. Open up our second hearing. We opened this up 7:09. Do we get a wait a minute here?
Got to wait. You can go late, but you can't go early.
Could I ask who has a phone ringing in the background to please mute themselves?
Or at least answer the phone.
Oh, God. Okay, it's 7:10. I'm going to open the hearing for P. 2021-011 Cumberland Farms of Massachusetts, Inc. Doing business as Cumberland Farms for a change of beneficial interest and change of officer. I will first entertain if there's any general questions from the public. Josh, just confirm. I don't see any.
Did not see anyone either.
Anyone from the public speaking in favor? Josh, again, I don't see anyone.
No one here.
Anyone from the public speaking in opposition? Again, I don't see anyone. And again, I would move to questions from town councils if the town manager could just give a brief overview.
Certainly, this this transfer request has been on your agenda for a number of meetings. It's finally awaiting some administrative process from the ABBCC. So the ABBCC has finally come up with a process that they can use statewide. So this is in front of you now for transfer. We internally have no objection. The operation should continue as it as it always has, and we don't anticipate any change.
Okay, excellent. Any questions from the town council? Okay, seeing none. Go ahead and close the hearing. It is 7:11. And entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
And we have it second. A move for a roll call vote.
Mr. Colin Bodis.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Dr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Thank you. Nine in favor, zero against.
Entertain a motion from someone to move G out of order. We're a few minutes ahead.
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
A roll call vote.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Dr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Colin Bodis.
Yes.
Thank you. Nine in favor, zero against.
Excellent. G. Licensed transactions. AP 2021-017, the granting of a one-day alcohol and one-day entertainment permit for Black Hat Brew Works on 9/9/912, 9/16, 9/19, and 10/3/2021. I'll defer the town manager just for an overview.
Thanks, Mr. President. Black Hat has requested five entertainment licenses and I believe three one-day alcohol licenses. And they, we have no issue with that. They are all onsite on their site and they conform with all the rules and regulations that that we have in place for them and also with any COVID restrictions that are either in place now or may come come to pass before their events.
Okay, excellent. Entertain a motion to approve and a second for discussion.
I move to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
Second. Any discussion from the council? No, I guess I would just say, if I hear nothing, I would just say, I'm very pleased to see Black Hat Brew Works entertaining this permit and continuing to be, you know, a really good business for the town of Bridgewater and I'm very hopeful that this passes with no problem. So I'd entertain a motion approved, which we had second, so I'll move to roll call vote.
Mr. Colin Bodis.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Dr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Thank you. Nine in favor, zero against.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Okay, seeing it's 7:15. I'm going to go back to F hearings. Letter C. It's 7:15. Open up petition 2021-018 Petition for National Grid in Verizon, New England to an installation of a stub pole 22-84 Main Street. I'd first ask if there's any general questions from the public.
I have a question. Amory Sullivan.
Amory Sullivan, just your street, please.
225 Main Street.
Okay, thank you.
I am not sure why we need to have that there because it's going to be against my property, I assume. On the right-hand side, looking at the street, and we already have one on the left-hand side, looking at the street, a pole. And I went all the way up and down Main Street and we're the only one on the street. I'm not sure why we have them.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to assume that the petitioner is here and could maybe answer that question for us. Is the petitioner here?
Correct. I'm here. I'm Simon. I'm engineer from National Grid.
Simon, could you just speak up a little bit? I'm having trouble hearing you. I apologize.
Can you hear me now?
A little bit better. Did you hear the question from the resident?
Yeah, correct. So this stub pole is for the tree wire for 233 Main Street, probably her neighbor. And her neighbor has a tree guy right now on her property that she wants to remove the tree. So the tree currently has that guy wire supporting pole across the street. And this street has a curve in it, so this is why I assume the 225 house has also one on the left side of her house. So this bend and this stub pole is also for the correction of support pole, supporting poles on property.
What?
Okay, thank you. We had a general question and then we had an answer. Do you have another question?
Well, I'm just, I don't, there's no curve at that. Did he say it's because there's a curve at the street? I mean, that's the straightway part of Main Street. There's no curve.
No tree.
It's attached to the tree next door. I understand that. And the tree needs to come down. But I don't understand why we need another pole.
The poles that take place of the tree.
But if there's not on any other part of Main Street, why does, why do we need the tag tree? Why do we need that there at all? I guess is my question. And what's it holding? Why are the, why are all the other poles on the other side of the street without any of those?
I'll see if Simon can answer, but then I don't want to get into a debate, so you'll have your opportunity to speak in opposition to it in a few minutes, but Simon, could you just speak to the concerns?
Yeah, for these guy wires, these guy wires exist probably a while ago. That's why it's supported by a tree. Normally, all these new ones that we put in are against for a stub pole or an anchor. And the stub pole is on the other side of the pole because there is an end on where our wires are across the street. Of course, if the poles right now on the street, if they're straight, there wouldn't be a need in opening an anchor or stub pole. But because there is a bend in where our lines are at that specific section, we'll need that stub pole there.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other members of the public that have a general question?
Yes. I was wondering if Simon could do something with this.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Could you just state your name and address to me, please?
Sorry. Barton Wallace. It's 249 Main Street.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm just having trouble understanding anything Simon is saying. It's coming across very garbled to me.
Okay. Did you not hear either explanation of the moving of the pole? No. Simon apologized and asked you to do that again. Just so it's a little bit more clear. I'm not sure if it's the device you're using, but I'm not sure we'll successfully get through the hearing if we can't hear you.
I'm trying to speak louder. So again, this stub pole is to replace the existing tree guy that's going in at 233 Main Street. The owner of butter at 233 Main Street is removing this tree, which currently has the tree guy supporting pole across the street. So they're requesting us to remove it, so we have to be in place or replace it with a anchor, a stub pole, and guy. And that'll be in front of their property, and this will just basically support the pole across the street.
Understood. Thank you. Are there any other general questions from the public? Okay, I'm now going to ask if does anyone from the public speaking in favor? Josh, I don't see any. See, I'm going to ask if there's anyone from the public speaking in opposition?
I'm just going to say I don't really want another pole. If it's a tag and it's going to be an anchor, that's different, or is it going to be a pole?
Okay.
We already have, like I said, we already have one on the other side of our property. I just don't understand why we need to have two at that on us and there's no one, none on anywhere else on the street. It just doesn't make any sense to me. I know, I know I'm not an engineer or I don't work for Verizon, but I just don't get it. Like, I can't believe that there's only two poles in the whole part of Main Street that need to be anchored on our side of the street.
Mr. President, Mr. President, can I, can I just, can I just ask? Ms. Sullivan, what's your address again, please?
225 Main Street. So it's two houses from Oak, over from Oak Street, and so there's a tag like between my house and the White House next door, and now they're going to put another one on the other side between my house and 233. I guess is what they're doing. Why can't they just put a tag line on Main Street like they've done with the other poles on the other side? Keep it all in that pathway instead of putting it across our walkway. It literally goes across the sidewalk. I mean, obviously, there's.
I want, I want to move on from public opposition. I understand, Amory Sullivan, you're in opposition to this proposal. I would entertain any questions from the town council.
Mr. President?
Yes, go ahead.
To Simon. So Simon, I'm looking at the, I guess, the plan or the schematic. All, in front of 233, the only thing that I see is the proposed J.O. pole locations. But Ms. Sullivan is saying that there's another pole in front of her property. I don't see it on this drawing. Am I missing something?
The one on the left, her left side is existing, so that is a stub pole that's supporting pole. Basically, it's 222 right now, so I'm assuming that one's 23. So that one is also supported because, like I mentioned earlier, there is a curvature or bend and that, like how our lines are fixed across the street. So because of that bend, that is existing and supporting that structure. And the tree guy for 22, one pole down on the right side of her property is supported by a tree guy right now. That's trapped to a tree, so this is why it is kind of needed on that end. We have to replace this.
Right, which I understand it's not on your, that existing pole is not on your drawing.
Right. There's nothing.
Because it's existing.
Well, right, but you also have, you have symbols on here for existing National Grid pole locations. Wouldn't you want to put all of the existing as well as the proposed on the, on the drawing?
Well, I would echo your sentiment, Counselor George. When you look at the actual National Grid, this proposed National Grid anchor and guide wire and overhead utilities, none of that is defined on this proposed plan as it's been submitted. I don't think it gives an accurate picture of exactly what's going on in the location, unfortunately, for tonight.
Right. But see, do you, do you understand, I just want to be clear. Do you understand my question here?
No, I understand your question. For most of these sketches, there wouldn't be 100% like to scale of where everything is at. So most of these petitions and sketches are mostly for the proposed and where we are putting in and what's new. So if you would like to see what's existing, like especially that stub pole that's next, next to this pole, then that could be added.
It would make sense because originally looking at this, you know, with what Ms. Sullivan said, I didn't see adding that second pole into the schematic, I think, does bring into question the need to have that pole there. The proposed pole.
Is that it, Counselor George?
That's it for me.
Counselor Colin Bodis. You're on mute.
I'm wondering if it might make sense to continue the hearing and so we can get greater clarity on the existing conditions. I don't know if the two weeks would make a difference to the applicant.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments from Counselor Gallagher?
I, I kind of agree. I think it might, if we could do this meeting in person in two weeks, we might have a clearer picture, but I have a question if I could, Mr. President, to ask the petitioner. Without an extended elaboration, what's the difference between a regular pole and a stub, a stub pole?
So a stub pole is to support the existing infrastructure. The infrastructure right now has all our electrical cables and that creates a lot of tension on the existing poles. The stub pole is for support. It's basically like an anchor. And because it bends, it bends in a opposite direction, we have to put it on the opposite side of the street. So that's why that one that is existing on the left side of 225, that one's existing, it probably was maybe a tree guy earlier or before and was installed into a stub pole like later on. So this is why we have to do the same if we were requested to do this, this tree guy.
Does, does this, without the stub pole, does there create an issue of safety without this stub pole?
The tree guy can remain. If there's still an issue between, let's say, 233 and 225, I think they can maybe talk this out with each other. But I don't see if in two weeks that if there is still issue with these two abotters having an issue with this, I don't think we have the power to kind of to, 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 like make them say yes. I believe the abotters will have to have a consensus with each other first. Because this replacement to install the stub pole is because of the removal of the tree.
Understood. Let's say that song, okay. I just, I guess that it would pose a public safety issue without this stub pole supporting what's there now. Is that correct?
Correct. If the tree guys removed, there would cause a pole across the street that's probably supported by it will probably would bend a little bit and we don't know if it will be like, you know, break or crack, but there is a possibility for that. So, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Maybe just one last question. I think I know the answer, but is this the only resolution? So if you assume that that current pole is leaning and by replacing the tree, we have to put something else there to hold it. Is that the only option or are there other options that are being presented such as, I don't know, replacing the pole itself with something newer? I'd just be curious to make sure there isn't something else here that isn't being presented. Maybe that's.
I'm not often sometimes putting a push face that will be basically on the property of the way the pole is right now, so that will be across the street. So I'm assuming this is 225. We're probably touching 230's property now. And we, we put a, on a pole to support that, the pole right there. We will have to put a pole in front of 230. That usually is not the way to go because those abotters would have a bigger pole or infrastructure right in front of the yard. But we don't usually do that because right now with this 225, there is a sidewalk there. We'll install a sidewalk anchor straight down. It won't be your guys like blocking the sidewalk. There'll be perfect clearance for you to walk through. And it's just like pole at the end of the road or side of the road. So usually this is the case when we replace the tree guys.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions from the council? I certainly don't want to close the hearing. If I'm hearing that, I'd entertain a motion to continue the hearing. I certainly don't want to close the hearing if I'm hearing that I'd entertain a motion to continue the hearing if that makes sense to the council.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. We'll move to a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Colin Baudes?
Yes.
Thank you. Nine in favors, zero against.
Thank you. Thank you, Simon. I'd probably entertain working with the town manager to bring this back at appropriate time. Okay, moving on, letter H presentations, town management metrics. The floor is to Counsel, Counselor Moore.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. I have a quick presentation. I'll try to share my screen. Josh, is that okay?
Yep, you're all set.
Okay, let's see. All right, I believe I am sharing now. Can you guys see that?
Yep.
Perfect. All right. So I think this will take about ten minutes and I appreciate the, the time today. So uh, maybe if I move in. But I think I have really sort of two goals. I think long term, um, I have some goals. I'm not necessarily looking for discussion or action on those today. Uh, but I do want to just share them for transparency in terms of like, why am I presenting this? Where, where will this go in the future? Um, and those longer term goals, uh, one, I'm, I'm really interested in us trying to, to clearly define some management metrics and targets uh, for all goals set by the town council. I think we've done this before. I'm just looking to tweak that a little bit in the future. Um, the second is, uh, I think we need increased investment in data capture technology and software systems for town services. I think we'll hear today from the town manager about some changes to IT. I would like to see us accelerate that focus and get more information about our town services through that. Um, third, I'm, I'll be advocating for a public webpage where we can share some of our town data metrics. And then lastly, um, one of the things I'd, I'd hope to see or would like to see is, um, more use of metrics and updates to us um, from different department and committee heads. So I think as they present to us, you know, understanding what the plan was and where they're tracking against the plan, I think would be an exciting part of those updates. Um, so again, that's just for context. That's not why I'm presenting today. Today, uh, I'm really just looking to introduce the topic and maybe establish a vocabulary that we can, we can use going forward. Um, so I'll dive in. Um, you know, I, I think maybe before I go deep into metrics, I do want to take a minute just to introduce the idea of a results framework. Um, and I do this because I think it can help us sort of position metrics in context to everything else that we're doing as a town. And if we, if we study successful cities and towns, um, you know, my sense, what I think they are is they're essentially experts at balancing like three things. Um, resources, actions and outcomes. Resources are the things that we have, right? Like the money we have, the property we own, people, citizens. Um, the actions are the things that we do, right? Specifically, the things we do with those resources, right? So these are the services we offer, the investments we make, uh, the rules that we pass. And then lastly, there's the outcomes. And the outcomes are the things that we want, right? So, so the reason we exist at all um, and we have the resources we have and we're trying to take actions is to create some benefit to our community. So the idea of outcomes is, is like documenting those benefits. Um, and I think we as a town are always like juggling these three things, right? So resources, actions and outcomes. Um, and I, I think as leaders in the town, uh, I think it, it's our job to understand what's happening in each of these three buckets um, and to remove roadblocks or set priorities where we can so that we get the outcomes that we want as a, as a council and I think as a community. Um, so again, just sort of setting the stage and maybe just to make it a little more tangible. Um, here's an example of how this, this framework might be applied to a town goal. So I heard earlier in the area, you know, we want to increase voter participation or voter involvement. So you could take an idea like that and sort of layer that in to a results framework, right? Um, we could brainstorm, what are all the resources available to us? Uh, we could also brainstorm, you know, what are the different actions we could take, like pick a few. And then lastly, and probably most importantly, we would decide what success looks like. So if we have a goal, you know, an outcome might be, we're expecting to see more voters. Maybe we're expecting to see more candidates or we're expecting to see more informed voters, right? And we, we could have discussions and like write this stuff down. Um, and so, uh, you know, if, if all of this happens, I could imagine that us, you know, as leaders could look at a summary like this about a town initiative and have a pretty good understanding of the resources that we need to bring to it. The activities people are planning to do and probably most importantly, like what comes out the other end? What's the benefit that we should expect to see? Um, but the tricky thing, and I think we've done this before, I'm not implying that this hasn't been done, but I, I think maybe where this falls short is the one thing we haven't discussed yet is like, how do we actually track progress against that goal? Um, and so you know, I, I think this is for me where the idea of metrics kind of come in and, and, and I think the power of them in the discussions, right? If we, well, if we want to clearly track progress against these goals, um, we would really want to continue the discussion beyond the action planning and beyond the outcome planning. And really say, well, how are we actually going to measure this? Like what, what information do we need to collect and track to know whether or not this, this week is better than last week in this specific area, right? Are we better than planned? Are we worse than planned? And so, you know, maybe just extending this example, you could imagine, you know, if we got together as a council and said, you know, let, let's agree that the measure for this is, you know, voter participation, account of voters. And we might say as a committee or as, as a council, we think we should be improving that number by two percent every year, right? And that's what we expect. We expect two percent improvement, uh, election over election. And we could look at that, right? Someone could calculate that. We could say that we meet it. If we did, we could say, great, why? Let's repeat that. If we didn't, we could, we could sort of change course and try some new action. Um, and so this is just, just kind of a tangible example of how we could carry a conversation all the way through to the point where we figure out a measure to this. Um, and so I just have maybe a few final slides. So um, in data-driven towns, at least from what I've seen, I've spent a lot of time kind of poring through websites of towns and cities that use data. Um, it seems like they all kind of go through some process like this to figure out what's important and figure out how they're going to measure what's important. And then they pull all of those key metrics and they put them in something called a performance dashboard. It's usually a webpage. But it's a webpage that publishes their expectations out to the town. But also that the, the community leaders can use to monitor progress against some of these bigger initiatives, right? Um, and so I think if, if we had something like this, you could imagine, you know, that when somebody came to present to us on the status of their department or on some initiative, you know, we could look at a metric and say, great, it looks like it improved or it didn't improve. Do you have any ideas on how we could maybe move that number, right? It allows us to maybe have a, a level deeper of a conversation um, than we can just sort of, you know, generically on gut feel. Um, so this example that you're seeing on the, on the board, this is from the city of Memphis. There are many others like it. Um, this is their performance dashboard. And it has all of their important metrics. So things about they're trying to improve library use. Uh, they were looking at public safety. They were looking at building, all the stuff they cared about. They just have up on the screen and the whole community, including us, can kind of go and browse and see how they're doing. And then the flyout example, you know, I picked this from public safety, but it could be any. Um, this is an example of a metric that you might see on those performance dashboards. So this is the fire department um, was, was really interested in responding to fire incidents faster. And so they decided to use a benchmark of, you know, five minutes and 20 seconds. It's sort of a, I think, a national target. But they didn't say, we expect the whole fire department to do this. They said, no, for now, we think it would be great if seventy percent of our calls could arrive within this time window. Um, and then they started tracking it. And you'll see in the example, they're actually doing better than that. They're at seventy-eight percent. So now in the conversations, they're not just saying, you know, we want to, we want to invest more. They're saying, well, it actually looks like we're doing well. What did we do to get that number up? How do we do more of that? Um, you know, maybe, and I think in this case, they actually added a, a physical fire department to a different area of town to improve that. Um, but it's, but it's with these numbers, you can see in the example, it's kind of below that green band. There's a target. And that's what the council or the mayor said was important. And then there's the actual labor. Um, and anyone in the community can kind of drill in and learn more about it. Um, so I'll show one more quick slide before I wrap up. Uh, I guess in the same way that those performance dashboards give towns and communities a way to look at the big goals and kind of align on what good looks like. Um, a lot of these towns also have reports coming out of their different committees or their, uh, or their departments. Right? And, uh, and this is an example from a small town in Minnesota uh, of a report that comes out every month from pub, their public safety groups. It's fire, it's police, it's, it's a few others. Um, and it shows all the incidents they had, sort of broken down by type. It's many pages long. It shows ambulance visits. It shows, um, you know, uh, health check, like a whole bunch of things. Um, and, uh, and they, the town uses this to kind of figure out how they're doing and find points of interest and to have more kind of engaging discussions with the public and also with, um, with their decision makers and public safety. Um, and so I think for us, you know, we often see reports kind of like this, maybe during our budgeting season. And it's usually about finances. Um, and, uh, and maybe we see them once a year and then kind of a check in later. Um, but, but I think, and I'm still learning, but I think, you know, we don't often see reports like this for other town services. Right? We, we looked at the building's maintenance a while ago. You can imagine you could see a report like this coming from them just to, you know, hey, what buildings did we, did we fix and what kind of issues are we seeing? Um, and I, I think if we had access to more information like this at a more regular cadence, we as decision makers would have just a better understanding of what's happening in the town. And I think without this today, you know, I, I think we almost have to try to watch a bunch of YouTube videos and maybe catch something from meeting notes, but there really isn't a good way um, for us to get aligned with like a common understanding of just the facts about the town. Um, and so I'll stop there. Again, my goal today was just, you know, kind of start the conversation and maybe, um, you know, kind of get a reaction to this either in the meeting or offline. Um, and, uh, and here are some resources. These are examples. You can go in and see what other towns and cities are doing. Uh, there's also kind of a guidebook from Harvard about how towns could start to think about this. Um, and then lastly, just to create some visibility, I, I did have a volunteer from the high school who's interested in data and statistics. Uh, you know, and we're looking to get her help to just kind of, as a project, dig into this and maybe, uh, kind of help us figure out a little bit more about some of the facts about our town. Uh, so I think that's it for today. Appreciate the time and consideration. And again, uh, in future meetings, I'll start to, you know, kind of building off this, build off this understanding with some, uh, some specific asks. So I'll, I'll stop the share there. I'm happy to take questions now, or I know we've got a packed agenda. We can also.
Fine. Counselor Moore, outstanding job on that. I'm really excited to see where this, where this goes. And I think it just provides such an invaluable amount of information for residents in the community and even just evaluating progress in town. But I would certainly open it up to any discussion from any, any member of the council.
If I may, Mr. President? Uh, I would certainly echo that sentiment, uh, that, uh, Counselor Moore, you've done a tremendous job with this. And I know that, um, it's a, a field that is near and dear to your heart. And I, I think there's absolutely, uh, the potential for us to utilize metrics more effectively, uh, in our day-to-day business on the council. I think that it probably the, the biggest hurdle that we would, as I imagine it now, that we face in not adopting, uh, you know, a, a more uh, quantifiable, uh, type of process is that we, we, we probably see it difficult to see how we can, you know, how we can actually numerically, how we can quantify progress in, you know, certain aspects of, of what we do. I mean, clearly in some of the examples you cited, you know, certainly, uh, response time for emergency services, absolutely uh, budgetary considerations, uh, once again. Um, but when we get into some other areas that are far less, uh, lack of better word, far less tangible, uh, it becomes, I think, difficult to envision how data can be applied, but, uh, I'm, yeah, I'm not sure if you have thoughts on that now, but certainly we would welcome that kind of input uh, in the future so that we could, uh, move ahead on that front.
Yeah, um, I think we could probably get into it more in a, in a future discussion, but I, it's absolutely true, right? There are some things, you know, like ticket response times and those sorts of things that are easier to capture, assuming, you know, we kind of have the right software. Um, but there are, there are other areas where I think we're going to have to spend some time brainstorming and say, you know, what, what piece of information can we as a, as a town council look at to know that it's getting better or worse? Um, and we, we might hit a dead end. Um, but I think for now, you know, I, I think as a baby step, it would be great to at least get into that exercise and see if we can come up with something, you know, what, what are some indicators? Now that, that we could share with the community and with each other, just to make sure we're all kind of looking at the same North Star. But great question.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, see it done. Thank you very much. Moving on to census update, invite the town clerk to speak on that.
Good evening. Um, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Okay, see if I can give you a picture too. Okay, I really am here live and in person. Uh, thank you, Mr. President. And this is an update for the council and also uh, for the citizens because I, I thought maybe, uh, I'd done a better job keeping the council a little bit informed than I had of keeping the Bridgewater citizens informed. Um, we have a final census count, which is excellent to know that we have twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-three. Which, if you remember back to the last, uh, presentations I've given, means that we clearly will not have seven precincts acting as seven districts. It will be something different for the next election, next spring. It'll be something different on twelve thirty-one twenty-one, which is the date that everything finalizes. Um, as in the presentations before, you can go back and look at those, uh, maps which won't be exact because that was before we had the census number, but they will be, uh, probably a fairly good uh, representation. We could possibly have eight precincts, which could act as districts. So that would be eight, eight district counselors. Oh, we could have ten precincts combined and acting as five districts to have five district counselors. And we could possibly, but a very outside chance have twelve precincts for six districts. That's all been presented to you before, and those are the things that remain fairly all except for the twelve, the, the ten and the, and the eight. I think remain fairly viable options. The eight being the least expensive, if we're going to talk about expenses. Because ten, we would have to buy several more voting machines and, um, hire several more workers for elections and have different polling places, that sort of thing, which we've talked about before. Um, we won't know anything for a while yet. The Secretary of State's office will be releasing uh, what they call a data release package will be coming to us sometime. Um, and we were hoping that maybe starting with a B, we would be one of the early ones to be on the list and get their data release package, but it doesn't work that way, of course. Um, they've done all the one precinct towns. Now they're working on the two precinct towns. And so we're not going to be very high there. And on the multi precinct towns, they're starting with the biggest ones first and going to do the smaller ones later. So as far as I can interpret that, it means we're not high on anybody's list. We're getting our data release package. But again, I don't have any idea what the time schedule is for the data release packages, how they're, how they're timing, if they're churning them out several a day, or if it's taking uh, days or weeks. Um, whenever I get it, I will update you again and let you know that we have it. And that's when we will see the maps that the state has put together for us. And we'll see if we can work with, um, those maps. They've already had, we've had a lot of good input from them. We've had a lot of discussion with them. So hopefully they all have a pretty good idea of what we're thinking that we would like to see and they will send that to us. Um, when they send it to us, we will work with it and then we will bring it to you, uh, for a presentation and, and a vote. And so that's my brief update. If you have any questions, you're very uh, welcome to ask me here or send me an email and ask me. Chances are really good. I won't have an answer.
Thank you very, Mary Lee. Thank you very much for all of your work in this area. I would open it up to the council for any questions. And I see none. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to town managers' report. First item is the Mitchell School update.
Uh, Mr. President, Mitchell School update. I'm happy to.
Mr. President, Mitchell School update, I'm happy to say, is uneventful. Work continues on pace and on schedule and on budget. We have not run into any major issues thus far. The exterior sheathing is going up. More work is going on with plumbing and electric. The roofing is is going in. The the sprinkler system is getting installed, so now really is when a lot of the trades are on site. There have been no days lost to injury thus far, knock on wood. And overall, it's making good progress. I will point out. That site work continued on the westerly side of the site towards the senior center. They have up until the senior center property, they have plowed in or plowed through and. Taken away the brush and and trees and so forth, and have excavated down for some. Utility replacements and also. To put the road base in. They've also installed some of the sight lighting along that road. And they are trying to get a an exact timeline and schedule for the senior center roadwork. Which will have an impact to the senior center operations. We knew that, and we know that, and we just need to coordinate that now that we're under construction. So that is really what I have for Mitchell School. It's on on time, on budget, and hope it continues that way. But happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Casey, and then moving on to B, technology update.
All right, let me just pull that up. All right, I did email out prior to this evening's meeting sometime this afternoon. I did. Email out the. Little sheet that I did, and I apologize because it's not coming up. Right away. Let me give me just one second. I will get it.
We throw you off because you're expecting a host of questions to the Mitchell School update?
Yes, exactly. Just expecting Counselor Fitzgibbons to pipe in somewhere. I apologize. Throwing a monkey wrench into your very efficient meeting.
Well, now I get someone to blame when we go over. I guess we I guess we do need technology updates.
It's for me. All right, I apologize. So I think this dovetails nicely with Counselor Moore's presentation, because I can tell you in a general sense that. Had he given his presentation as short as probably three or four years ago. We wouldn't even be able to contemplate, you know, being able to to identify metrics, track them. Generate the data and then process it the the way that that I think Counselor Moore and the council would like. So I'm happy to report that that really we've made incredible progress on our technology. We we started. Our technology, essentially quote unquote, our IT initiative, really pretty late for other. Relative to other cities and towns, very late, actually, relative to other cities and towns. So. Really, not until the year two thousand or two thousand and one, did we even have networks and and personal computers. And desktops upon which to work. So so very generally, we started out with one person, Brad Dirzak. Who joined us from BSU directly. He was a graduate of BSU and he stayed on to work in their IT department specifically helping the town implement its sort of first network. From that time to now, he has been joined in twenty eighteen by Justin Viera, who is who's been a great addition to the department. And then we have a third part time staffer who has joined us to to. Help us through the pandemic related IT workload, which has been quite incredible. Servers, generally, when we talk about servers, and I'll I'll try to sort of, you know, dumb it down for myself, quite frankly, but. Our first server environment was implemented in two thousand and one, as I mentioned, it took. Was the culmination of almost an eight year wait. And once it was finally implemented and installed with BSU's assistance. IT really, at that point, was just there to make sure the server stayed up and fix a printer if the printer went down and so forth. We massive massively upgraded our servers today. We've got over thirty virtual servers, which run all the systems. That 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 we have implemented over the years, but we've got a much larger server. Presence and and that's thanks to the hard work of certainly the IT. Now now I can call it a true department since we've got two and a half folks there. Our, as I say, our first town computers came essentially from BSU. We did not replace those for over eight years. In twenty eighteen, we by then we had gone through a replacement, but in twenty eighteen, we replaced all of our. Existing computer hard drives with solid state hard drives. Which gave them extra memory and gave them a few more years of of life expectancy. We also. Did away with Windows XP and moved to a Windows ten platform. In twenty twenty twenty, largely due to the pandemic, we. Really went headlong into providing. Appropriate personnel, appropriate staff with laptops. Prior to that, we had already begun a pretty aggressive program of of replacing. Computers, I generically call them computers, but laptops or desktops. With up to date equipment that would allow more mobility, allow employees to work from anywhere, whether you were the DPW. Director and you needed to, you know, bring your laptop with you on site to to do drawings or or take a picture or do notes or what have you. It's provided a real dramatic increase in the in the efficiencies that we have among among the staff. As a good example, in twenty nineteen, prior to the pandemic, we had outfitted. Most of our DPW employees and trained them with either handheld devices of some sort or iPads to assist in their field work. Prior to that, especially in water and sewer, but also in our roadways department, to some extent, we had. Relyed on literally hand drawn maps on paper, paper field cards. Paper tie cards, which were in the process of now converting to an electronic format. But it was all paper and it all required multiple trips back to the respective offices. By field staff who who needed additional information. So we've eliminated the need for that. We've gone on. On online, so to speak, and information is now accessible in the field by and anybody and everybody that needs that information to get their job done. We've done a lot of networking work, and that's that's quite frankly, a little beyond my. Beyond my expertise, so I'll I'll leave it to what's written in the. In the handout that IT gave us, but I can tell you that our capacity for storage, one, and our capacity. To to on the wireless side is is about as advanced as we can get at this point. We started a wireless upgrade project in twenty nineteen, and and we've extended that to all town buildings now. And then twenty twenty, we've extended the the Wi the guest Wi Fi networks. Out to outdoor areas, including the town common, the academy building front. Area and parking lots, music alley, the library, the senior center, all those. Areas outdoors now provide a Wi Fi signal that residents and staff can use. To 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 get on the internet or whatever, whatever you need for for internet access. Back in twenty twenty oh two. Again, thanks to BSU, we had five main buildings that were connected with fiber. Back then, it really was pretty pretty cutting edge, not so much anymore, but we had we had about five buildings that were connected in the downtown area. Most of our other sites were not connected. We did in oh four, we did connect to the police department, then in oh eight. Comcast funded fiber connections to the rec building in the senior center, and then finally. In twenty fourteen and twenty twenty, we we did additional. Lines to to make sure that all of our, all of our buildings were connected with fiber high speed capacity. The twenty twenty initiative, which tied mostly was geared towards water and sewer. Tying in the Carver Pond Treatment Plant, the high, the new High Street Treatment Plant. As well as picking up the sewer plant and fire station two. That was off, the cost of that was offset by a state grant, which which Brad and Justin successfully secured. Or I think it was eighty three thousand dollar grant to help us with that. So. So that was quite helpful, but but it was a project that needed doing. It would have been done regardless of the grant. Because it's critical to to have have that kind of network. Amongst and between all of our town buildings. On the on the website side, again, a little probably late in the game, but in two thousand. Brad Dirzak created essentially a homemade website. That's what the town could afford, and that's. What he could do for us. It had pretty static, but it had some. Some functionality, but was was fairly limited. And that based the the structure of that site basically existed until twenty fifteen. And at that point, we transitioned to an outside hosted site through our vendor civic plus. And that decentralized, as a first time, we could actually decentralize the the website. And allow departments to to be able to better manage and edit their own webpages and not have to rely on. Our one or two IT staff to make make changes on the website. So that. It's kind of a sea change in terms of our ability to to manage information and get it out to residents. And I will be the first to admit, we're not quite there yet. We've got more training to do and and more focus on making sure that the website can be. You know, the primary source for for documents or for. You know, things that that citizens needed any any given point at three in the morning or. You know, one in the afternoon. In terms of email. That email is not as exciting, but but we do. We have transitioned our our email to off site host as well. We do Office three sixty five, and that that was a fairly large project. But the benefit there is that allows allows certainly counselors, staff. And anybody on our email system to check their emails from anywhere, regardless of of power outages, network. Malfunctions or outages or or our website going down. So. So in terms of emergency management, that was a huge, huge benefit and and just as well as plain old. Functionality. I think one of one of the biggest. Things we've done through IT and finance is switch our financial. Financial software to a package that actually is considered one of the 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 better. Packages in in the country. That's Tyler Technologies Munus Software. That was done twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen timeframe. I can tell you prior to that, prior to twenty fourteen, and I remember these days well. I'd go up to accounting when it was in the old cat second floor of the old Academy Building. And late, late at night, Roy Greeney would be up there trying to cross her fingers and and trying to plug in payroll into a. A DOS based system and just praying that it wouldn't crash so that we could actually process. Checks for for employees, and and that was certainly a huge red flag that that we were not. We couldn't go on that way. You know, you can't have somebody, you know, literally praying and crossing their fingers, hoping that the technology will work. So Munus, the implementation really did greatly expand our our financial capabilities. It allowed us budgeting, it allowed us capital planning, it allowed us a whole host of things that that as well as HR management. And so on, that that we couldn't do on the old system, if you want to even call it a system. More recently, we've converted all our bill paying to to electronic, which allows us to. Store all of our invoices electronically without the need to retain paper copies. That will be an enormous benefit to us moving forward as we don't. We don't need to. Retain all the paper that previously we we had to retain. We do have, we have been planning for the last couple of years to roll out a bit of a financial dashboard, which which Counselor Moore touched on a little bit. In terms of, you know, more a broader dashboard, but we we do plan on rolling out sort of the financial dashboard, which allow residents to. To see and track our our financial data in real time, check account balances, see what bills have been paid and so forth. So the phone system, I'll just run through some of these quick, but the phone system, again, prior to twenty ten, each department literally had its own phone line. And and fax line, and there was no means of of any kind of encrypted messaging or transmission of fax. At that point, and and the town had an enormous phone bill. Sorry, town had an enormous phone bill in. We've implemented, we installed our first digital phone system in twenty ten. We've improved upon that quite dramatically in twenty twenty. With a system that allows us to. Plug in our computer anywhere and be able to answer calls that come in to to the phone on our desk for for better. Example. And so that that's been implemented in most departments in twenty one and twenty twenty two will roll that out to. All the departments, so we can really consolidate our 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 phone bill. And and see how how well we can manage that that expense. I won't go into security. It's 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 there for you to look at, but I will just sort of touch on cybersecurity. Cybersecurity has been an. Incredibly important issue. Worldwide, certainly you hear stories about municipalities, cities and towns being attacked. And their data being held ransom and and literally. In some cases, police departments having to pay pay ransom to get to get their data back. So prior to probably twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, our our security, our cyber security was really limited to sort of. Retail firewalls, things that you could just buy off the shelf at that. You know, whatever the little staples. And provided just very basic protections. And and in twenty eighteen. We developed a broader security plan and implemented a pretty aggressive employee training course. Which seems to have been quite effective in in protecting us. And and so we continue, obviously, to to be very sensitive to cybersecurity issues. We did in. It was early twenty twenty, IT department had done some work and 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 was sharing information with their BSU. Peers to help develop grant application for for BSU's. First in Massachusetts cyber range, which is sort of a. For for BSU's, uh, first in Massachusetts cyber range, um, which is sort of a, uh. A, a, a training, um, module or training setting for, for those that are studying, uh, specifically studying cyber security. Um, and I'm happy to report that BSU, uh, did get a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant to, to implement that. So, so that was, uh, that was good news. Um, and so I'll really end it by just saying, uh, you know, back in, in two thousand and thirteen. Or prior to two thousand and thirteen, IT managed maybe a, maybe two or three different, uh, maintenance contracts. Uh, the town now generally, uh, has a whole number, countless number of contracts with, uh. With software and and, uh, and hardware, uh, providers, maintenance, uh, and upgrade contracts. Um, ranging from security cameras to irrigation pumps to, uh, financial systems. And so they manage all of those, uh, contracts and and do a pretty darn, uh, good job for us on those. Um, so I'll, I will leave it at that, I've probably exhausted that subject, but I'm certainly happy to answer any, any questions relative to, to any of that.
Thank you, Michael, open up to the council, Councilmore.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. President, through you, to the town manager. Uh, thanks for the update, I've requested it and, uh, certainly thorough and I appreciate all the detail. Um, maybe just a, a few points, um, and as you mentioned, the cyber security piece of it, I think is a pretty big threat. Uh, if you follow this, you know, it's not just big cities or government, large government institutions, it's small towns. And even school systems that are, that are sort of being targeted. Um, and the way that they often get in either is through old equipment or through, uh, employees that aren't educated on good practices. And so I was really excited to see in your update, uh, that we've essentially addressed the old equipment problem for the most part. And that we're actively addressing, uh, the employee education piece of it, so that was great. Um, and maybe just my last comment, um, you know, aligned with the data, uh, pieces that I presented earlier. You mentioned that we're looking to implement the citizen complaint tracker. Uh, that would be a great example, actually, of something to pull metrics out of and get a sense of, you know, what are people requesting help with? And how quick are we responding to those requests? I look forward to seeing the data from that, but, uh, great update, appreciate it.
Thank you, I, I, I did, I apologize, I did not mention, um, that, uh, citizen tracker or citizen, uh, complaint. Or citizen, citizen input tracker, but that is something, uh, we are hoping to roll out, uh, within the next, uh, couple of weeks.
Council what?
Um, yeah, uh, good update on all the technology. Um, w- one thing I'd suggest in to partner with that is maybe having the different departments review what they're presenting on their, their webpage. Um, and and go an annual audit of that information, I keep tripping upon older information, you know, two thousand and nineteen. Um, you know, DPW is formed, but the director's name's not out there, things like that. Uh, just, you know, it's good to be on good technology, but the information's far more important, thanks.
Good point, any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing done, uh, Michael, just two, two brief comments, I, I noticed the networking, the fiber network. Um, from the sale of the old Hunt School back in two thousand and two, uh, is BSU still providing us internet access?
Yes, they do, uh, which is a, really a tremendous savings, uh, to the town on the, on a year-to-year basis, but they do. Um, and I don't foresee that, uh, ending anytime soon, they've been quite a good partner in that respect.
Um, and just one other follow-up, I noticed a lot of the milestones, really significant ones have been met in the last several years. Would you be able to equate that to having a second employee finally in the IT division to help with that workload?
Um, certainly, I would, I would attribute some of that to, to having a second person, that, that's been invaluable. Um, and I think we've seen some, some good processes implemented, just, just because there's another person. And not just one person trying to be sort of the, the proverbial one-armed paper hanger. Um, but I also will tell you that we've made a, we made a very conscious effort, uh, probably in the two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen. Uh, timeframe, uh, to, to begin to upgrade, uh, our, our financial, uh, rather, our IT infrastructure. Um, at that point, it culminated, um, really in two thousand and fifteen with, with sort of centralized. Um, server room in the academy building, we built that to accommodate really most of the town's needs. Um, certainly, um, most of the town's needs, uh, considering our move to a virtual server environment. So, um, so I would, I would say it's probably those two things, it was quite a conscious decision to, to. Um, dig into and and embrace technology, recognizing that we weren't going to be, um, hiring lots of people. So, so technology really was the answer, uh, in many cases. And then also, also hiring, uh, Justin, that the, the second, second, uh, in the, uh, IT department.
Okay, thank you, moving on, uh, see capital project update.
All right, and I think, uh, Counselor Sousa had, uh, pointed out that in, uh, in his report. Chris Hartman, our facilities director, had not really getting, given any timelines, uh, to some of those projects that he was working on. So let me, um, run through those and and I'll, uh, I'll commit this to a writing and, uh, circulate it, uh, tomorrow. Um, but I'll, I'll run through some of the, the items he mentioned, maybe one or two that he didn't mention, that I do want to update you on and, and give you a timeline on. Um, so software, uh, facility software implementation, uh, that has been purch- uh, purchased and installed. And we are in the, in the, uh, early phases of, uh, of getting that, uh, populated. So that was, uh, purchased in June. Um, the, uh, company and Chris did a townwide facilities assessment in August. Um, all of the technical specs of all the components are, uh, being uploaded to the software by October. And then, uh, should be fully functioning, uh, by November. So that is the facility software implementation, uh, which dovetails ironically with, with our IT department. Um, I think everybody that's been, uh, in the academy building recently has seen some exterior painting going on. Um, that project is, has to, should be completed, uh, before October. And, uh, then the crew will move over the old town hall. And, uh, depending on, uh, weather conditions, uh, through the fall, that proj- project should be completed by, uh, December first. Um, and, uh, and so that, that will, uh, certainly upgrade the exterior of the town hall as well, old town hall. Um, library windows, I think you mentioned, um, there, a good chunk of them, uh, require, uh, replacement. Uh, we do, he went out and got estimates, uh, he has those. And that is ready for a bid process in the fall, uh, with an intended, uh, construction. Or window replacement start of spring of, of twenty-two, uh, next year. Um, the current quote for those window replacements is about eighty thousand dollars, uh, so it's not, not an inexpensive proposition. Uh, the roof, uh, we know we need to replace the existing roof and those, uh, estimates have also been secured. Um, and, uh, and we are ready to go out to bid pending appropriation. That appropriation will come to you, uh, in the second round of capital appropriation, uh, this fall. Um, and then again, that, that, uh, replacement is, uh, would be scheduled for two thousand and twenty-two if the appropriation goes well. Um, library HVAC system, um, the AC upgrades. Uh, are scheduled for right now, uh, believe the company has been there, we did have a glitch. Because, uh, one of the big pieces of equipment that needs to be installed, uh, came damaged, so it had to go back. And, uh, and the supply chain issues, uh, for those kinds of pieces of, uh, equipment are pretty, pretty, uh, onerous. So, so we're not quite sure on the completion of that, uh, project. But, um, but that, once that is done, once we get that and that is completed, we're anticipating that to be this fall. Um, then, uh, over the next three years, all of the, uh, independent heat coils, which are located through, located throughout the library. Uh, will be replaced, so there are thirty-three of them, so we're anticipating about eleven of them being, um, replaced each year. Uh, and that, that should start in, uh, the spring of twenty-two as well, next spring. Um, the library carpet, uh, we have received estimates and we are ready to go out to bid. Uh, again, pending additional appropriation, our original, um, anticipated, uh, appropriation for that. I believe was in the thirty thousand dollar range, um, maybe thirty-five thousand dollar range. It's, uh, the, the actual cost that we have received is, uh, ninety-eight thousand dollars, which is a, a triple our original estimate. So, also gives you an idea of, um, the cost of, of some of these items, uh, and the escalation over a very short time period. Um, the, uh, academy door, the academy building side door replacement, which I know the council, uh, is anxious to get done. That procurement process is done, the quotes have been received and the target, uh, installation date is November of twenty-one. Uh, but again, uh, pending, uh, receiving the actual door and the, and the, uh, materials needed to do that, that job. But that's when it's tentatively been scheduled, uh, for November. Um, we have, uh, fire station doors, uh, those overhead doors, uh, six of them. Um, have parts that are scheduled to be replaced, uh, before December. And again, pending, uh, parts availability, um, those, uh, those parts replacements are intended. Uh, to extend the useful life of those bay doors, um, so we're trying to get some additional time, uh, out of those. So that's, that's one of the more proactive, uh, items that, that Chris is, uh, trying to get done. Um, we have two others that, that I'm not sure that he brought up, uh, when he had his discussion with you. We are, uh, trying to plan, um, two things at the senior center, one is a pergola, we, we're calling it a pergola. Um, and that essentially is, is sort of a hard structure designed to go, uh, where the current tent, uh, is. We found that, uh, that tent, which we put up, uh, due to COVID is, uh, creates a space that's actually, um, could be an attractive spot. And, uh, and, uh, sort of a good, a good place for, a good, cool place for folks to sit outside, uh, during this, well, during probably three seasons. Um, so that, uh, is the pergola and then a pavilion, which is designed to replace the, uh, front entry. Uh, the front entry has sort of a canvas, um, and, uh, and plastic, um, sort of, uh, entryway. And we'd be looking to create a, a bigger pavilion there and a covered, uh, a covered, uh, space. In which, uh, people can get out of their cars and, uh, and not be subjected to, to the bad weather. So, that, uh, that site has been, um, measured and, and, uh, the structural plans, uh, have been drafted. Uh, for review by engineering, DPW and the building department. And, uh, and those plans, uh, next will be shared with Bristol Plymouth, uh, regional, uh, tech school. Who is, has, uh, committed to, uh, providing construction, uh, services for, for that project. So, so that is underway and, uh, again, pending, you know, uh, any, any issues with COVID. That, uh, that will derail, um, you know, possibly derail the timeline there. Uh, we are hoping to get, uh, one, if not two of those projects underway this fall. Um, so that, that is, uh, that is what I have for right now, but again, I'd be happy to, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, any questions from members of the council? Okay, seeing done, moving on to COVID nineteen update.
And I'm happy to report, uh, I know the news is, uh, sometimes, uh, a bit glum on the national level. But, uh, right now, uh, Bridgewater continues to hold steady, we have eight active cases. Um, and, uh, we have a positivity rate which is, uh, three point, uh, four percent. And, uh, and that is not terrible, uh, it's not the best, but it's certainly not terrible. Um, and so we are, we, as I say, we are holding our own, we don't see, haven't seen a, a spike, uh, in cases. As much of the rest of the country has, um, but, but we, uh, obviously always do, uh, make sure that we're tracking, uh, these numbers carefully. I will point out that it's eight reported cases, I think as this pandemic wears on, uh, quite frankly, fewer and fewer people. If, if they, um, you know, have symptoms, I think fewer and fewer of them are getting tested. Um, and just, you know, suffering through, uh, hopefully without, uh, dire consequences. But suffering through the illness and then, and then getting, uh, recovering. So, um, so that's what we have, eight, uh, reported active cases. Um, I can tell you, we're holding firm at about, uh, fifty-four percent of our population that's eligible, is fully vaccinated. And, uh, and a slightly higher percentage, about almost sixty, uh, have at least one, um, one, uh, dose of, of vaccine. So, that is, uh, where we stand, um, right now and, and, uh, picking up on the president's. Uh, note at the beginning of the meeting, we will, uh, anticipate being back in the building. Uh, at least, uh, for counselors at our, uh, next meeting, uh, if something changes, certainly we'll let you know. Uh, prior to, prior to that meeting, but that's what I have on COVID.
Thank you, any questions, Councilmore?
Uh, through you to the town manager, just a quick question, you said fifty-two percent, I think, of eligible, uh, citizens are vaccinated. Do we know what pers- what percent of the remaining eligible citizens had COVID? And might therefore not be getting vaccinated because they've already had it?
Uh, that's a great question and I don't, I don't know that, uh, DPH, uh, gives, uh, that kind of info. Well, I know they don't provide that kind of information. Um, but if there's a way for, uh, our health agent to find that out, I will, uh, I will ask him and see if he can get that, those figures.
Great, thanks.
Andy, uh, Council Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. President, just quickly, Mike, if we come back to this, to the, um, McCann Building two weeks from tonight. What do we need to prepare for? I mean, what, when you talk about technology, we just, do we just show up like we normally do? We gotta bring our laptop, do we, are you going to expect us to wear a mask? I mean, what, what do we, I mean, I don't wanna, I mean, I just.
A good question, uh, we would, uh, we have, um, we have, uh, laptops available for all the counselors. We would not have to do that, really, it's more just our, our, uh, testing the, um, technology that we have. If you've seen, um, recent, although they've switched back to virtual or, uh, yeah, virtual at this point. But if you've seen, uh, some planning, uh, board meetings or ZBA meeting, meetings, I believe they've been back in the building. Um, and, um, so the technology seems to be pretty good, um, you know, but we do need to tweak it. But, um, right now, I don't anticipate requiring masks, um, we'll space tables out appropriately. Uh, we do not require masks in the, in the town hall, um, we encourage people, uh, to wear them if they're so inclined. But, but we do not require it, so, uh, we would space out the room adequately, so that there's plenty of room. Uh, social distancing, uh, space between, between counselors. And then, uh, and then really the, the burden is on us, just to make sure that the technology is going to be as seamless as possible.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, any other questions from the council? Okay, seeing them, thank you, Michael. Moving on to discussions, we have none, uh, committee reports, any, uh, committee updates, Council what?
Thank you, uh, budget finance met tonight on two items, uh, they are both on our agenda here. One is the acceptance of mediation payment, which we voted three to nothing to support. The other one, transfer of downtown Shoret is a, is a transfer, uh, we're still holding that committee. So we should take no action on that in this agenda, uh, here, thank you.
Thank you, Council what, uh, Council Chase.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, I do have a brief update with respect to the search for a, um, a new, uh, council clerk. Uh, the, uh, council some months ago did, uh, appoint an ad hoc committee. Uh, consisting of counselors, uh, George, uh, Souza and myself. Uh, and we have, um, gone through the process of review of, uh, a good many, uh, resumes submitted by potential candidates. And furthermore, the ad hoc committee did designate, um, appointed interviewers. To actually conduct the interviews of, uh, prospective candidates. Those interviewers are President Rushton, Ann Holmberg and myself. The Assistant Town Manager, Kimberly Williams, has assisted greatly, acting as a facilitator in the process. And we have interviewed a number of candidates, but most importantly, for purposes of this update, I can tell you that we, we have identified a a quite likely subject to a lot of things, approvals and her ultimate acceptance. We have identified a likely candidate for the position that we will present before the full town council. Just to give you an idea of what we anticipate to occur, the, the firstly, we will be conducting another meeting of the ad hoc committee. I I expect within the next week for the purpose of submitting the name of the successful candidate to the ad hoc committee for their approval. At which time, we would ask the ad hoc committee to recommend presentation of the final candidate before the full council for ratification. There are a number of steps that are necessary between those events, which are largely in the area of vetting of the candidate in terms of references and things of that nature. But we do believe that we, in all likelihood, have a final candidate. We've just narrowed, we've, in recent weeks, we've narrowed the field down to two candidates. And we believe now that we're able to recommend the appointment of a, of a of a new successor to the position of Town Council Clerk. The, that is all I have to offer at the moment. My expectation is, once again, that the ad hoc committee will, within the next week, I would hope, have a meeting for that purpose of approval of the candidate and that a final presentation of the candidate before the full council could take place at our next meeting on September twenty first. So that is what I have available, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Chase. Any questions from the council? Certainly, Council Chase, I appreciate you. Council George, Council Souza, through the process that we've been through over the last several months, a really difficult process in terms of just recruiting in general in the employment market that exists right now. But I think we have really two strong candidates. My hope is that as it moves through ad hoc and comes to the council, it'll be more of a show of support in the new candidate. I I certainly don't intend to question the candidate at that point because we would have offered the position and have started the vetting process. And and the two finalists, out of respect for them and their unemployment, will will continue to keep the names confidential through that process until they presented to the full council on the twenty first. So I certainly appreciate your help and thank you very much for all the work that you have done, as well as Kimberly Williams in her process that she's developed over a number of years and in order to really have a good vetting process for candidates coming through a blind process. It's been extremely helpful, I think, in this process as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on. Legislation for Action, A, Ordinance, D F Y twenty one dash zero zero five, General Ordinance, amended section twenty five, Committees of the Town Council, Rules and Procedures. At their meeting held on seven twenty twenty one, the Rules and Procedures Committee voted to recommend approval as amended. This measure may not be considered this evening, but has to be sent to advertising. So entertain a motion to send to advertising.
If I may, if I may just interject, it looks like the sponsor of that legislation is Ms. Loesch, who is absent and obviously under the council's rules.
Yeah.
The council cannot vote on legislation. It must be withdrawn by the council clerk if the member's absent. However, I think we've had this happen before where it carries over. I would probably recommend that an amendment be made tonight, replacing sponsors so that when it does go to a vote, it would be more likely the the, that a sponsor of this particular ordinance would be there.
Mr. President, I'd be willing to sponsor this.
Okay, so entertain a motion to change the sponsor of Councilwood.
So moved.
We'll move. Second.
Okay, move for roll call vote.
Mr. Colin Modus.
He left the meeting.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Thank you. Eight in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Entertain a motion now to send to advertising.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Don't worry, standing, move for roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Thank you. Eight in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Moving on to item B, Order Zero F Y twenty two dash zero zero nine, Acceptance of Mitigation Payment. The Budget Finance Committee met on nine seven twenty twenty one. Their disposition was, as we mentioned earlier, three to oh, recommend their approval. The Finance Committee voted to recommend approval at their meeting held on eight eighteen twenty one. This measure may be finally considered this evening upon receipt. Motion, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? See, and then go for roll call vote.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Thank you. Eight in favor, zero against.
Okay, next item C. I believe we're gonna take no action this evening. Is that what I understand, Councilwood?
Yeah, I I can make a motion to postpone until. Can I ask you a question to Town Manager first? Through you to Town Manager, is it likely that we would have another workshop on downtown between now and the next meeting? Or or one after that?
I think it would be more, more likely that the one after. So if you were to postpone this for until October, the October meeting, first October meeting, that would be perfectly fine.
All right, that'd be my motion to postpone this until the first meeting.
We have a second.
Second.
Second. All those, move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Thank you. Eight in favor, zero against.
Okay, moving on to old business. We have none listed. Moving on to new business. Item A, Ordinance, D F Y twenty two dash zero zero two, Bridgewater Town Charter amended amendment correction of typographical and punctuation errors. Entertain a motion or send the rules and procedures.
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Thank you. Eight in favor, zero against.
Moving on, item B, Ordinance, D F Y twenty two dash zero zero three, Bridgewater Town Charter, Article Four, Town Manager, Temporary Absence. Entertain a motion to send the rules and procedures.
So moved.
Second.
Move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Thank you. Eight in favor, zero against.
Moving on, item C, Ordinance, D F Y twenty two dash zero zero four, Bridgewater Town Charter, Article Three, Elected Officials, Library Trustees. Entertain a motion to send the rules and procedures.
So moved.
Second, Becker.
Send for a roll call vote.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Thank you. Eight in favor, zero against.
I could just, point of order here, I guess, D through J, there's no discussion. We're sending all of these ordinances to rules and procedures. Could we do that in one motion?
Yes.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Thank you. Eight in favor, zero against.
Excellent. Moving on to item O, Citizens Comments. Do we have anyone here for citizens comments? Anyone wishing to speak? Josh, I do not see anyone indicating they, oh, maybe.
I have Carlton.
Tony is connecting to audio. Let's give her a second. Yeah.
I also have Carlton with his hand up.
Oh, sorry. Dr. Carlton Hunt? You're up. Unless he's having audio issues. Unless he's just saying hello.
He's on silent. He's not.
Okay. Doesn't look like.
It looks like maybe Carlton can speak through mine. His isn't working again.
Okay.
Sorry, guys. I think I know what's wrong. I put my, we're in the same room and I put my computer on mute. So and it mutes everything. Two quick points. Thank you to Town Counselor Moore. I think that presentation on data-driven information is phenomenal. I long wish that to go forward. The other thing, that kind of thing to be put forward, I think it's, will take a lot of work, but I think it's critically important for the public to know more and get better feedback from the community. The other piece that I would say is that concept needs to find its way into the developing master plan for the town. I think that's a really important action item to be included in there. So my expectation would be possibly that Mr. Dutton would bring that over to the action list for the town. Otherwise, thanks for the information on on the town council's report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens for citizens comments? Joshua, I did not see anyone.
Did not see anyone else.
Okay, moving on to council comments. Council George.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to say that I very much appreciate both the town police and town fire putting on a memorial, twentieth anniversary memorial for nine eleven. Hoping that the councils can make it and also see some, some good citizen support as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's good to be back to see everybody, even though we're still on Zoom. But hopefully in two weeks, we'll be able to meet, meet as a council once again in our council chambers. So that's good news. And as Council George said, I hope that everybody, all the citizens that are available on Saturday are able to attend the nine, the twentieth anniversary of the nine eleven attacks and say their respects this Saturday. We appreciated. That is it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Again, echoing the same sentiments. You know, look forward to the event the Saturday for the nine eleven memorial. Just want to also wish, you know, all the students for the town of Bridgewater, a good start to the school season and much success to all of them. Also want to just remind everyone, if they're interested, this Friday night is going to be the first game for BR football. Not sure if it's at the high school or not. Could be at East Bridgewater High, I think is the backup location. But BR versus Duxbury this Friday night coming up, seven o'clock.
Thank you, Council Chase.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just also like to welcome back the, the BSU students and the BR students. It's good to see the academic calendar in full swing again. And we certainly wish everyone the very best and and a very successful academic year.
Thank you, Council Souza.
For many years, our mind was the nine eleven. And I'm going to be downtown with the fire department and I hope to see many of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Moore.
Sure. So I think some may know, but I was working in Manhattan on nine eleven and saw those events live. And so I have to say, you know, it was a day of just unprecedented bravery, but also unprecedented community support. And so along with everything everyone else has said, I also encourage everyone to just find a way to recognize the fire and police department and also remember the days and weeks after that event and the way that we as a country and as a community came together to support each other. So I think there's, there's a lot of lessons to be learned there. Second, I'd also like to congratulate all the students returning to school this week. And I'd also want to extend my sincere thank you to all of the administrators, the teachers, the students and the parents who pulled us through what was a tough year and I'm excited about the year ahead. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwood.
Thank you. It is, it is an important milestone. Hopefully, no one ever forgets nine eleven. It's a, it's a huge impact to our country. And I wasn't in Manhattan that day, but I was working financial services. And I can tell you that a lot of people pulled in different directions and the bravery of those guys down in the down at at the World Trade Center was incredible. I I want to put a plug in for a little local club that has started out Music Alley is now in the library. The Chess Club of Bridgewater or Bridgewater Chess Club plays every Wednesday night from six to seven thirty. This was a volunteer effort. Couple of guys got together and have put together equipment and are are doing, learn how to play chess for the, for the kids and and learn how to play chess for our older, our older people like me who get, get beat up by the kids every Wednesday night. But it's a great outing. And the welcome, the public is more than welcome. I think there were about thirty people there last Wednesday. And as about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwood. And I guess I can say this now that Dennis Gallagher is here and it's the end of the meeting. But one of my takeaways from today was a late afternoon accident in the town common, which took out nine granite columns in the center of town. And and what it made me think about is the first day of school today in Bridgewater and asking people to just slow down. I mean, to go through nine columns. You know, I don't even want to think about the speed that's going through there. And, you know, with all the kids returning to sidewalks and waiting on bus stops, there's nothing that important that you have to get to that, you know, potentially risks the life and safety of all the kids that are back out on the sidewalks and streets and crosswalks. And I would even ask unofficially if we can somehow get our town billboard signs back out on the road for another week or two, reminding on a, you know, major roads that kids are back out and appreciate it. With that being said, I'm going to move to next side of our agenda is executive session. Entertain a motion to move into the executive session on the Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty One, Little A, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel and to adjourn from executive session. Entertain a roll call vote, like entertain a motion.
So moved.
I think George said it in unmute and then we have a second.
Yes.
Go ahead and roll call vote, please.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George? Mr. George?
Yes.
Thank you. Eight in favor, zero against?
Thank you, Josh. I'll wait till you clear all of the.